And I just want to let people know that we had a very frank and good discussion. I think some good ideas came out, and it's not the end of it. There's going to be another meeting with landlords, landlord association, and ultimately a public meeting with the citizens. And this should all happen over the next three or four weeks. Stay tuned, but I'd like to see if Councilman Craig, you'd like to add anything to that?
No, I just think the meeting was good. It was a first step, and the idea is to have all the parties working together and to work together ahead of time rather than reacting after the fact or trying to get something done in the last couple of days. So it was a very, very good meeting. And the beginning of many more meetings we're going to have to have.
City managers, one there?
The only thing I'd add, Your Honor, is the fact that we also discussed safety along the parade route. There was some pretty good discussion on that topic as well.
Okay. The other thing I want to remind everybody, if they need it, to vote tomorrow. And a lot of elections, important elections, from the president on down to our local elections. If you think your vote doesn't matter, you're wrong. Every vote counts, so make sure you get out and vote. City manager?
Your Honor and counsel, I have two things. First is I just want to echo the mayor's call to vote, but also to thank our election judges and for volunteering, all the other folks as well that are working to make this election happen. And then the second thing is I'd like to give a little time to John Howard to talk about the Green Step City program, just by way of introduction. And then he's going to talk a little bit about the program and then what our next step is as a city.
Honorable mayor, counsel, good evening. My name is John Howard. I'm the National Resource Sustainability Coordinator, and I've been looking at the Minnesota Green Step Cities program, which is offered through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. This is a...
Is that mic on? Doesn't seem like it.
Hold on. It's on now? Okay. So I've been looking at the Minnesota Green Step Cities program. It's a voluntary, fully voluntary program that provides guidance and assistance to cities that are trying to increase sustainability, and the opportunities are quite varied with this Green Step Cities program. There's 29 best practice steps with many different actions within those steps. All of it is up to us as a city. If we were to choose to go that route, how we would, what we would do. And so I've taken some time to analyze the city's actions thus far, to see where we would enter into this program if we so chose. And I do have a handout here describing the program if you'd like to learn more about it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And hopefully, in a month or so, I'll have a better understanding of the baseline of where the city's at, and we'd be happy to have a workshop and have a more formal discussion. My best.
Any questions for John? If there's none, thank you very much. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the edge banner request for their live nativity scene. I move to approve this request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Carrie.
Item 3.2 is a license agreement for mobile concessions with Joel Anna Cabbie, doing business as Anna Cabbie's Awesome Eats.
Is there a motion?
I would move to approve this motion.
Motion, is there a second?
So you need to specify the term and the license fee.
Are we going to discuss this?
If we have a motion with a second.
We do not have a motion with a second. We have a motion, no second.
But we need to have a more specific motion.
Does it include the dates for the agreement, so if you want it to be January 1st through December 31st? And then the fee for the license?
I would definitely move the January 1st through December 31st, and the license to be charged would be $200 a year.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Pam, but seconded by Al. I'll open it up for discussion. Michelle?
I guess I'm against this simply because our current ordinance says no downtown concessions without a brick and mortar building. And to make an exception here would mean we would need to make them for everyone. And so I, simply because our ordinance simply states we need brick and mortar, I cannot support the ordinance as stated.
Pam?
Yes, I am really not so concerned about that part of it. I am concerned, however, that we need to get a little more in control of the downtown, these downtown food vehicles. I've gotten many calls from two different people whose businesses have been vandalized by the crowds that come after bar hours, break windows, and so forth. And I'm not sure what we can do to limit that or to take care of that. I know the police have been called, and that's about as far as that has gone. I wonder if there's a way that we can draw them away from Third Street with all of its plate glass windows. I just think that there's nothing wrong in my mind with this particular application, but I think the whole program needs to be a little bit more carefully looked at.
Al?
I seconded it for purposes of discussion, simply because I think we need more information. And I wanted to get that on the table during our time on that motion. I'm a little confused. I mean, many cities have had lengthy discussions on how to deal with the food trucks or the mobile concession trucks in their communities. And I feel right now, for both the existing concessions as well as any future ones, that we really don't have a good handle on what we need to do as a community. And I would like to know, and I tried to get more information from the League of Minnesota Cities, but my internet was kind of spotty this afternoon, so I really didn't have time to do the research. But I don't know if $200 is a fair fee. I don't know if it's, you know, too high, too low, or whatever it is. But I'd like more information on this. And I think we probably should do something besides approve this at this time. As I say, I seconded it for purposes of discussion, to get the information out on the table, and maybe that's what we need to do, is to table it and move forward with additional information at a later date.
Other comments? George?
I agree with Councilwoman Alexander that a big expense of this business is having your brick and mortar restaurant, if we want to refer to it at that. And I think allowing this and not having your stationary restaurant or food preparation site, whatever we want to call it, I just don't think it would be fair to the other vendors that are following the ordinance.
Well, I agree with both Councilman Borzakowski and Alexander. I think it wouldn't be fair to the other restaurants. And I think we have an ordinance that states it needs to be a brick and mortar, and if we would do something other than that, I don't think $200 would be sufficient. So I'm not going to vote for it either.
And I won't be voting for it either. I agree as well.
Just to clarify, as I say, I seconded it for purposes of discussion, and I think we've had a good discussion. I think there are some issues that are brought up, perhaps in the future we could bring back. And I, as I say, even though I seconded it, I probably wouldn't be voting for it as well.
Michelle?
I mean, I'll agree with Mr. Thurly that we could look at what other cities are doing more closely, especially as relates to non-taxpaying entities that want to bring trucks into the community to serve, because they probably do charge them a higher fee. But for this purpose right here, I don't think we can waive our ordinance as written without looking at it more closely. So obviously, I've already stated I'm not going to vote for it tonight.
Ready for a vote?
Well, I just wanted to say that in many other cities, there are food trucks that come in that offer creative culinary opportunities for people, and they're not anchored to a brick and mortar restaurant. So I think that we might take a look at our ordinance and see if that's really, if that really is really serving the community.
Well, as long as you brought that up, I do remember when we had the two down there when we first started this, and we had a number of brick and mortar businesses that complained to us. One of them actually considered it one of the reasons that they shut their doors. That may or may not be true, but they felt it had a serious negative effect to their bottom line. So at that point, I believe that's when we looked at having a maximum of two for that particular downtown area and requiring them to either have a brick and mortar or at least have a, well, in this particular case, I've had a number of conversations with the gentleman, and since he doesn't have brick and mortar, he has been working to try to get a relationship with one that's down there. That's going to cause some potential issues, may need some further working out. Or if we will decide as a group that maybe the brick and mortar isn't that important, we'd have to have a different fee or at least take a look at a different fee. So the motion as it's stated, I'm against, but I'm certainly not against revisiting this, not only for the city, but also for this particular gentleman who has been trying, and he's had a number of conversations with city staff.
All right, ready to vote?
I would just add one thing that I think, and also I think as part of the future discussion is the need to look at restrooms and the fact that if somebody does have a brick and mortar facility downtown, that they're not simply a restroom facility for the food trucks.
I think we have an ordinance on the books still that states that any facility that's open and has public restrooms cannot deny access to the restrooms. Am I wrong? I mean, if you have public restrooms, you can't stop someone from coming in to use them? I thought we had that discussion a few years ago.
We have the city attorney.
I have no idea. It's possible.
Because I used to get that complaint from Steamboat Days, but I was pretty sure we had a discussion at that time that said you cannot deny someone a public restroom if it's actually public. Not that that means that people want to have a restroom for these people, but I don't...
No, I'm just saying that that needs to be part of the overall discussion as well, whether it be porta potties or whatever. But that needs to be part of the discussion.
Should we vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I meant aye. I'm sorry.
I think it was 6-1.
Yeah.
So who was the aye, Pam?
No, no, that was accidentally me, and it was inappropriate because I want to be known.
So there's no ayes?
I think there were one aye, five nays, and one inappropriate.
So for clarification, Your Honor, do you want staff to look into this? Sounds like there's a number of questions we'd like to...
I think it should, because I do believe that this gentleman will be bringing it back very soon, and if not him, others, because as Councilman Ayden brought up, that this is, I mean, there's more and more communities doing this. Yeah, we just had a little better handle on it.
Item 3.3, Caroling by Candlelight Request for Friday, December 2nd.
What was the request?
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 4.1, under Unfinished Business, is to award the contract for Sovietski Park Pavilion Project to the lowest net bidder of Wabashak Construction in the amount of $688,000, pending receipts from the community foundation. Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Before we vote, is Boomer, you want to come up and put you on the spot, say a few words about the project?
What would you like the community to know?
I guess what I'd like to do is thank the council, each and every one of you personally for your support through our journey on this project. You guys, you know, supported us from the beginning and were always there for us. I would also like to say we're very grateful that for our new city manager, without him and his cooperation, we would not be here tonight. He is a very nice guy to work with. You can be proud of your choice or your city manager, and it's been very enjoyable working with him. Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome. Anybody have any questions for the woman, as long as we got them up here? If not, thank you very much. And any other discussion on this?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work and everybody involved, all the volunteers.
So if you guys can adopt this tonight, and if we can get a contract, I think you've checked, the funds are in the community foundation. If we can get this contract done, we can be in the ground a week from today. And all the contractors are ready to move forward. So it's exciting, especially for the Fourth Ward and for the entire community. And I'd like to thank all of the people, especially the early donors, that came on to support this project and the vision of it. I very appreciate the work. And I know some of you on the council that personally donated, we thank you for that. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, George?
And also just to add to Steve's follow-up, we're still accepting donations as well, too. So of course, some odds and ends to be done, but I had a good opportunity to be with this Neighborhood Watch Group. It was formed in 2007 on the corner of Seventh and Steuben Street, I believe on a Palm Sunday morning, and with the help of the Second Ward Neighborhood Watch Group, they helped, you know, kind of get us together with things and help us out. And we've been together ever since, and just one day in the park, you know, let's look at trying to maybe build a new pavilion, and it just took off from there. It's been a long run, but everyone, you know, cooperated as much as they could. And I'll admit, there were some times when we probably had some, you know, some dull moments, as, you know, things are kind of maybe stagnant right now, but every now and then we'd get an adversary, and that would just simply pump us all up to go again. So it really worked out very, very well. Looking forward to the project, and thank everyone with the Watch Group and all those, again, that contributed very, very much. Thank you.
Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Item 4.2 is the Winona area pollinators recommendation. I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion?
Yeah.
I guess not. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, George, did you have something?
Did Mark want to say anything?
Or Jim, or Marv?
Marv? Marv, excuse me, Marv.
We appreciate you considering this, and we're happy about this.
All the bees. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
And under new business, item 5.1, the Small Cities Development Program Preliminary Proposal.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by George. Discussion? Nick?
Do you want to back on the motion?
Sure.
Honorable mayor, members of council, after a citywide survey for this preliminary, it came determined that our west central area is where we have the need in this community. We're looking from Third to Wabashaw Street, McBride to Hyde. This application we sent in this Thursday, and if we're invited back for a final, that will be due in February of 2017, and if we're granted these funds, we should have funds for the west central area next June.
Good program. George?
As I just to say, also a very good program, because I think the last one or two, the east end of Winona, had a chance to participate in that, and they had quite a waiting list and plus one major development. So it's definitely a good program and helps neighborhoods out, no doubt about that.
It's a very competitive program, and far more cities apply than get awarded, and the city of Winona has always been one of the leaders, which means that the staff has been, trust me, deed is very, very picky in how they choose them, and the city of Winona has chosen every single time when the money's available for Winona or for this area. So staff's been doing an outstanding job. And in this case, hats off to Nick. He had to get very creative to get this application together. So a lot of pounding the pavement out there, looking for prospective homes to do the work on, so.
Good job.
Good job.
All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.2 is converting Main and Third Street from a signalized intersection to a four-way stop intersection. Make a motion to approve the attached ordinance.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Pam?
A point of discussion, I'd like to understand a little more about how this fits long-term with the plan for the lower end of Main Street. Will this, how will this affect the traffic or any kind of traffic flow moving into the Levy Park, attracted by the Levy Park idea?
At the intersection of Second and Main right now, that is a four-way stop, so it'd be really consistent with the area. When you look at the traffic counts, on Third Street, there's 2,600; on Main, there's about 2,300. And the warrants for a signalized intersection mean 500 vehicles per hour during the heaviest eight-hour period. We do not have that in this area. This one is very good for the criteria for a four-way stop, which is about 300 vehicles per hour during the heaviest eight-hour period. And we have very similar intersections of lockdown with Second Street, a few blocks over with Franklin Street has almost identical counts, I mean, within 100 vehicles per day, and that functions very well. I do not see this being a major impetus for any change in this area. Four-way stops are pretty darn safe with pedestrian traffic, and I know that's a very valid concern in this area. They seem to work out great. People know how to peruse them very, very easily.
Do you anticipate that this might slow traffic down in any way, or, I mean, in a good way?
In that area with the angle parking, that really seemed to slow people down more than anything, because people are worried about a vehicle backing into them. I would say your average traffic speed in there is between 25 area. I've never done a count on it, but I've observed a fair amount after we did the angle parking, and it really slowed down, you know, constricting that and then the angle parking. So I don't see this changing speed much at all.
Thank you.
Will this, will you have any kind of, in the transition period anyways, flashing lights?
We're not going to do flashing. We certainly have to do the flags, so because it is a new thing for that area. People are used to seeing the signal there. The beauty of those signals are, is they're on the poles, they're not over the middle, so you're not having that big change, you're already looking to the side. But we'll definitely do the flags right away. I don't see the real big, strong need for the flashing ones.
Al?
So what museum will you donate those lights to?
You can drop them in your front yard if you like.
Well, the holidays are coming up. It's something to have.
We'd probably scrap those.
How old are they, do you know?
I don't know for sure. They were the analog up until a couple of years ago, and they're no longer analog, but the wiring is, I think it came over in the Mayflower, I'm not 100% sure. It's old, it's very old. That's why we can't, we can't get the pedestrian to work, because the conduit won't fit the new wire.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
George?
I myself, I think it will move traffic better. Like a lot of times down there, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, you may be the only car...
Having to wait for a signal.
Wait for the signal, so.
What are you doing down there?
I was just saying.
I think George is hearsay on that.
He's been getting calls from the Fourth Ward.
Just after 1:00 in the morning.
You know, so just checking out downtown area.
Any other questions?
If there's none, thank you. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.3 is the yield intersection on Service Drive at West King Street. I'd make a motion to approve the attached ordinance.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brian, I have more questions about this. What's the rationale for the yield on Service Drive, the yield signs, as opposed to a stop, a three-way stop there?
Honestly, when I looked at it, it was like a conflict coming off the highway. There's not a lot of that movement coming off the highway, so I didn't want to take Service Drive traffic and really impede it with a stop sign that eventually, honestly, without low impact, people will not stop consistently.
Yeah, and what about the eastbound Service Drive traffic as they yield? And they also have to be aware of traffic turning eastbound 61 onto, say, King Street or Service Drive. That's a pretty skewed angle. Again, we're dealing with, you know, Gilmore 61 again all over in that area, right here, basically.
The low traffic counts really helps. That's, you know, I get a call on this intersection probably once or twice a year.
There's a confusion there. I understand that.
Which isn't really a huge amount, but it's enough to where, I'm sure there's been near misses. I looked at the traffic accidents in this area, and there aren't any.
Oh, okay. That's my next question.
But it's, you know, it's definitely confusing, especially you probably get a fair amount of out-of-town, not used-to-the-area traffic doing that movement, and they're not expecting this traffic on Service Drive not to yield to them. You know, they're the higher rate of speed, that's why they're not getting any, plus there's no place to pull them.
So any conflict or any issue with the recently improved area to the east of that, the Orange Street, Gilmore?
That would contribute to this, or?
Well, anything that might affect this at all, if we assume we go ahead with this.
I don't see this getting more traffic because of what happened east of here.
Yeah, that's what I was getting to. Okay, good. Thanks again.
Brian, as long as you're up there, not out there a lot, but twice recently, I've seen cars on Orange Street turning left to go south on Highway 61. They're kind of weaving in and turning...
Going in the three-quarters, or?
You're not supposed to be able to take a left there.
Right, you're not supposed to be.
But cars are doing it.
So how are they doing this?
Well, they're sort of weaving around.
Really?
Twice now, and it's...
And you've seen this twice.
Yes.
I will definitely take a look at it.
And I think there needs to be some kind of a sign there, something more of a warning than what we have.
Right. No, thank you for the concern, certainly.
They have some do not enter signs up there as well.
Or no left turn, or something, I don't know what, but...
Yeah, I'll definitely...
One of them was from Wisconsin. That means nothing.
I guess it does.
It wasn't out of state.
Yeah, they was probably from Iowa.
I don't know.
It's a coincidence.
Anything else here? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Item 5.4 is the agreement between the city of Winona and Borzakowski Towing and Salvage. I'd make a motion to, I guess I'd second then.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion on this?
Just a question, I assume the agreement is critical to the one we've had in the past?
Mayor and council, I would note there are two changes. In Section 4, they will have shorter office hours on Sunday. And the second change was the towing charge, the fee itself is going up slightly. There hasn't been a change in the fee in several years.
Was it 75, and that's 100, is that...
I believe so.
Okay.
Anything else? George?
Just for the record, as we pass this tonight, my name is Borzakowski, not Borzkowski. And I am referred to by Borzkowski a lot of times, you know, George Borzkowski, but it's Borzakowski. No relation.
Are you saying you won't have our cars at your house? Or what are you saying?
I can't even keep my own truck at my house.
Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item five point five is the WSU Garvin Heights Agreement for Maintenance. I'd make a motion to authorize administration to execute this agreement.
I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Al, just a comment. I assume this is in concert with the pollinator recommendation that we just passed earlier that, you know, those kinds of things, you know, invasive species control and all of that will not harm that. And I guess I'd like more information about allowing goats to be used in the process to remove the invasive species, and if the city has any liability in, in, you know, granting this proposal regarding the four-legged critters.
Let Chad answer that.
Mayor and council, to answer the first question, we would be in concert with the resolution you just passed on the pollinators. And we would work with Winona State to make sure that we are following that resolution. As far as liability is concerned, the agreement states that the liability is with Winona State and their subcontractors, meaning the goat subcontractors. The city is not liable.
I'm sorry, just thought it'd be funny, goat subcontractors.
I'm sorry.
We don't have that every day here.
No.
So they're, they're the ones responsible for any issues that might come up with aggressive goats and potential hikers in the area. I mean, that was, you know, legitimate concern, really.
I'm sure that we could think of a million possibilities, but if, you know, a goat gets out of the area that is designated and, and damage occurs or an incident occurs, then it is the responsibility of Winona State and their subcontractors.
Okay. Just to make sure it's.
We had a similar agreement with goats in, in Rushford. Had them on mogul some bluff for three years. And every once in a while, they'd make a break for it and chew up the neighbor's yard. And they were compensated for it.
Okay.
They do a great job. They'll eat everything there, everything they can get a hold of, and they're fun to watch.
I've got some grass.
We'll actually have people come from far away to watch them, do their thing.
We birdwatch, why not goat watch?
Make sure visit Winona knows about that. Turn it into an event.
People will drive all the way from Wisconsin.
We'll make sure that lines up before they get here.
I think we're ready to vote, aren't we? All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item five point six is the Levy Park Gateway Utility Design and Engineering Proposal.
Oh. I would make a motion to direct the city manager and clerk to execute the proposal with ISG. I would second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Michelle?
Just have one question. Chad, we checked, this is utilities, so we checked about electrical along this corridor, correct? I know this is talking about some other forms of utilities, but I just want to make sure we're looking at the electrical needs we might have in the future for this area.
Mayor and council, yes, we are indeed making sure that we have appropriate electrical on the street as well as for special events. In particular, you know, farmers markets needs, et cetera. Right now, they're coming off a station that is really in the alleyway by HBC. And we have already sent in to ISG what we feel are the appropriate electrical needs for that area.
Excellent. Thank you.
Al. Chad, this is $28,300 from the sanitary sewer fund. Is this something that was budgeted for, or is this something that is in addition to, or does it, does it take the place of some other sanitary sewer project within the community during this timeframe?
Mayor and council, first question is not a budgeted item.
Okay.
It's my understanding from the public works director that if, in a case where we're doing major construction like this project on Main Street, that if there were issues with the sanitary sewer before or after the project, then this fund would cover those costs. And so to be preemptive, while we're digging up the street, it's prudent to replace and move the sanitary sewer lines. And so the public works director recommended it come out of the sewer fund.
So this just covers the area from Second Street to basically the Levy?
This covers the section from the Second Street into Levy Park. And I say into Levy Park because there is some potential work that is still being worked on during the design phase that may go into the actual park across the tracks. So as you're looking at Levy Park, either the southern side of the patio or the northern side of the northerly line.
And this is just for the design and engineering? Does this include all of the specifications necessary then to issue a request for proposal for the project?
Correct.
Because we don't know what the estimated cost is at this particular time.
No, we cannot.
Because you don't have all of the design elements needed to have a contractor apply for that. Okay.
Correct. It also covers construction administration.
Oh, oh, that's good.
We were hoping we could just slip-line it, but it's, it's too far gone.
Okay.
It's better to open cut it.
Well, there are probably 100-year-old sewers in that area anyway, so, they're pretty old.
So mayor and council, just one further point now, just for clarification, since you asked, they're, they have an estimate for construction administration. And so that is, it could be above and above, as I've mentioned in the council action item, above that $28,300. If it gets above that amount, of course, the sewer fund will cover that.
I just wanted, you know, didn't want this to impact sewer fees any more than we're doing already.
It won't. It won't.
Any other questions? None? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point seven is an agreement with Winona State University Nursing and Health Science Programs. I'd make a motion to direct city manager and clerk to execute the agreement. Second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item five point eight is to set the recess meeting to certify results of the city general election for next Tuesday, November 15th at 10:00 a.m. So move?
Second. Second by Michelle. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion? I know Pam, you said you cannot be there?
I cannot be there.
Does everybody else come? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just one question. What if we don't know who the president is yet, November 15th? Does that affect the votes at all?
It may not. It'll be over. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with Paul.
Since daylight savings time ended yesterday, I thought it was important to address bicycle safety law as we start the darker winter months, according to Minnesota Statute 169. Just as a review for people, is bicycles operating on a sidewalk crossing a roadway have the same rights as a pedestrian? Bicycles are not permitted, however, on the sidewalks in the downtown area of Winona. Bicycles are required to have a white light visible from 500 feet, which is just under two city blocks from the front, and they're required to have a reflector in the rear, which is visible 600 feet, which is two city blocks. Bicycles' pedals shall have reflective material on each side to be seen front and back. And the operator or the bicycle should also have 20 square feet of reflection. Device can be on the, on the rider or the bicycle on each side so that cross-traffic can also see them. So I think it's important because we now have an extra hour of darkness.
Okay, thank you. Pam?
Yes, it's leaf-falling time. I've seen people out getting their leaves out to the curb and putting them in, in barrels and doing other things with them. I'd like to remind people that it's illegal to brush your leaves into the street. It's illegal to brush your leaves into the street for the city to take care of or to wash down into the, into the storm sewer. That this is part of the problem for Lake Winona. So Lake Winona receives altogether too much organic material already with, with people mowing their lawns and, and the residue going into the, into the lake. So I just wanted to remind everybody, pick up your leaves, it's great for compost, and that's all.
Okay, George?
Thank you. I would just like to congratulate the Winona Senior High School football team on advancing to the state tournament. Thank the young athletes, their coaches, their parents, and they are definitely a good sign of tourism for Winona as they advance up to the state. And also, these students or these young athletes that are on this football team liked the team last year, they are all products of the Maury Miller Youth Football Program. So we can see how that program is advancing these young kids into young athletes. So congratulations to them, good luck, and we will all be pulling for you.
Michelle?
I had a meeting with Bob Dunn. They have a very handy device that's in cooperation with Verizon. It's called a Verizon meter. It can be put on any home. They've tested them with, mostly with landlords who have larger buildings. But what it does is that by the five minutes, will detect a leak in the property. It'll tell you if you have a drip, a large leak, show you water usage over time. This is a good way, if you're concerned about having leaks in your house and you don't like the quarterly bill, to deal with that. I went online and looked at how it, it spreads out over time. It's really one of the most amazing meters out there. There is no cost from the city side to install. There is $180 a year charged to use the service through Verizon, but you don't need a Verizon phone, you just need a computer or access to the internet. Bob Dunn has asked if anyone, any homeowner is interested in more information, that you contact the city water department. They do need a month or so lead time to order the meters. But I have to tell you, this is maybe one of the slickest things I have seen, especially if you're concerned about water consumption in your home, or if you think you have a leak but you can't detect it. This, this meter will email you or ping you immediately and say, hey, there's a drip somewhere. And over time, over a month, you can figure out what your toilet flush rate is, what your shower rate is, and determine which, which device is leaking simply by the amount of water used when you shut everything else off. It's, it's very slick. Contact the city water department. They really want to get these in some of the homes in Winona to help deal with leaking issues. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
Thursday will be, it's the, 10th of November, it's the 241st birthday of the United States Marine Corps. There will be the birthday ball, it's going to be held down at the Legion, starting at 17, at 5:00. That's open to everybody, tickets are still available. And then for, and I'm going to be, be remiss here, how many years it's been, but it's going to be close to 30, our 24-hour Veterans Vigil will take place, starting at midnight that night, and it'll run for the entire 24 hours of Veterans Day. Everyone is welcome to come down and visit the bunker and visit the vigil as it's going to be going on, as it always has, for the full 24 hours.
Al?
I just noticed in our council table here, we are, have been given a copy of this book called Being Mortal, and this is through Winona Health and the Winona Public Library. There's more information, I'm sure, at the library, and I appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to looking at the book and reading it and participating in this whole program here. So I appreciate that. Also, I had a constituent express a concern about the increased truck traffic, especially coming down Highway 14 into Winona to go to the port to deliver various commodity items, and the use of the semis, it's called dynamic braking devices, or more commonly known as Jake braking devices. And I've asked staff to look into better ways to enforce that particular ordinance that we do have. There is signage at the top of Stockton Hill and in all of the entrances to Winona that talks about those dynamic braking devices being prohibited within our city limits. And my understanding is that the courts are reluctant to go forward with any kind of fine or prosecution. So I've asked city staff to perhaps be a little more creative in ways to enforce this particular ordinance that, that maybe doesn't involve the, the courts and those systems like that. Perhaps there's an information packet that can be sent out to the various trucking companies around here just to advise them of the ordinance and that perhaps there will be other ways to make sure those drivers know the need. It's only generally used for emergency slowing purposes. And if it's not needed, especially at 6:00 in the morning, coming down Stockton Hill, if, if it's not needed, then it helps for the peace and quiet of the residents of our community when they're not used. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you.
And under the consent agenda, there are six items. The approval of the minutes from the October 17th and 24th meetings, the final adoption of an ordinance for the liquor license fees for 2017, an ordinance for 10-minute parking on East Wabashaw, and three claims against the city, one by Ian Corey, one by Adam Wojcik, and one by Bonnie Barnholtz.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'd second that.
Motion by Al and seconded by Pam. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I move we recess.
Second.
Motion by George and seconded by, um, Michelle.
Me.
Michelle, I knew it'd come with your name. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recession.
Recession. You were so close. It's Al.